Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of July 17th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the room. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please start us off?
On today's agenda for Monday, July 17th, 2023, is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Welcome, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Beckeas, members of the council. Thanks for having me once again to do one of the things I most enjoy doing, which is to offer this Mayor's Award of Excellence, this time from March 2023 to two members of our Lincoln Police Department. Officer Brent Lovett and Investigator Jason Drager were nominated by Lincoln Police Sergeant Wendy Ground in the categories of safety and loss prevention for their work to investigate and significantly reduce catalytic converter thefts in Lincoln last year. In her nomination letter, Sergeant Ground noted that Officer Lovett was pivotal in creating a catalytic converter task force that coordinated multiple LPD officers, investigators, and crime analysis staff, who've also won an award from this topic, as well as investigators with the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office and the Omaha Police Department. The task force shared intelligence tying suspects in Omaha to multiple theft cases in Lincoln, and in the process collected information that is now part of a pending federal case. For his part, Investigator Drager helped to arrange an undercover operation to purchase catalytic converters, which were then matched with specific local theft cases. Several of these cases have since resulted in arrests or the acquisition of significant intelligence related to this case. Thanks to Officer Lovett and Investigator Drager's professionalism, their initiative, and collaborative efforts, catalytic converter thefts in our community were dramatically reduced last year, dropping from 155 in May to just 29 in August. In nominating them, Sergeant Ground thanked the dudos for their, the duo for their, quote, "commendable" efforts to reduce a crime that had highly impacted our community, unquote. So I hope you'll please join me in congratulating Officer Brent Lovett and Investigator Jason Drager for their truly excellent work. And at this time, AC Jackson, Assistant Chief Brian Jackson from LPD, is going to come forward and share a few words about this dynamic duo.
Brian Jackson, Assistant Chief. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor for perpetuating this award, and certainly the council for giving us time to recognize our employees, not just Lincoln Police Department employees, but employees across the spectrum. We were here a couple of years ago for an ordinance on catalytic converter thefts. I also want to thank you for that, for that effort. It's made a, it's given us a tool that we didn't have before, and it's a tool that these two used to the benefit of our, members of our community in impacting not only, you know, the crimes locally, but also working with other jurisdictions to help crimes there. Certainly, I'm an advocate for statewide law for catalytic converter thefts because we get a lot of, as you recognize, we get a lot of people that, that come here and then sell them elsewhere. And, but this is part of their efforts, is they identify the weaknesses, and they're able to work with others to, to, to find solutions to make arrests and convictions to make our, our communities safer. They've worked very hard. It is kind of our philosophy, and they've demonstrated very well that they problem solve, they identify a problem in our community, and then they, they, they look for solutions and how to solve it, and you did that very well. And for that, you should be recognized, and I thank you very much for your work for the Lincoln Police Department.
So here today is my wife Jessica and my three sons, Jackson, Cooper, and Morgan, and then my mother Terry and my in-laws, Brad and Beverly.
And then my wife Kate, who's also a police officer, and then my parents Gil and Michelle, and then Sherry, who is also here.
Well, thank you to your families for supporting your work, because we know how much that matters to your ability to do your job and serve the public. So thank you to the families, thank you to you both, thank you to the council. I don't know if you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We will give folks a little bit of time to leave the chamber, and then we'll continue on.
Okay. As a reminder, in regards to our testimony, testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. They should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group that they represent, speaking in favor, opposition, or neutral to the item. The clerks will use a light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided here at the dais. You can testify at both podiums. The green will start time for your testimony, yellow will indicate that you have one minute remaining, and the red light will indicate that your time is up. First on our agenda today is our consent agenda, sections one through three.
Is there anyone here present who would like to speak on the consent agenda? That's items one, two, or three. Anyone here for the consent agenda, items one, two, or three? All right, seeing none.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is reappointing Roger Macy to the Lincoln Housing Authority Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2028, introduced by Duden.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Items 2A through 2C were introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second, Duden, discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Items 2A through 2C were introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second, Duden, discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to section four, our public hearing liquor resolutions. Item 4A is application of Top Spin LLC doing business as Tavern on the Square for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 200 feet by 200 feet at the center of people in need at 3901 North 27th Street on August 12th, 2023, from 3:30 PM to 10:30 PM.
Is there anyone here to speak on item 4A? Don't see Matt, so I'm gonna guess not. Okay, very good. Let's move on to 4B.
I'll call item 4B, application of Jacob Thieson doing business as Hub Cafe for a special designated licenses to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 30 feet by 30 feet, and an outdoor area measuring approximately 200 feet by 170 feet at James Snyder Trail Center at 250 North 21st Street on July 28th, August 25th, September 29th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Is there anyone here to speak on item 4B? Anyone here for 4B? Okay, very good, moving on.
We can now vote on those two items.
Unless anyone has any objections, I am going to move passage of both 4A and 4B.
Is there a second, Duden, comments? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckeas?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. That concludes section four of our agenda. We shall now move on to section five, public hearing resolutions. I'll call item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for June 16th through June 30th, 2023.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 5A? Anyone here who would like to speak on item 5A, the claims report? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 5B, approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County for the South 98th Street improvements from Old Chaney to A Street.
Mr. C.
Good afternoon, Council. Assistant City Attorney Tim C., 555 South 10th Street. Here today to discuss with you a quick interlocal agreement regarding the paving of South 98th Street. This is a stretch from Old Chaney to A Street. It's an agreement between the city and the county, just sort of outlining the responsibilities of the two parties. I believe it's actually a county-approved project under a federal aid program, but the city is cooperating in it, and so this agreement is just intended to lay out those responsibilities. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Looks like we also have our city and county reps here as well. I see no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Engineer Dingman, welcome.
Thank you. Lancaster County Engineer Pam Dingman. You know, in my development engineer days, I used to get to come to the City Council all the time, and now I only get to come every couple of years. This is an agreement that Lancaster County Engineering Department, along with Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, and I know Liz is here too, have been working on for some time, along with this project. This project is the paving of 98th Street from A Street South to Old Chaney. It has, oh, roughly 450 to 550 cars a day on it, ADT cars and trucks. That means that this corridor really dramatically needs to be paved. The thing that is super cool about this, and I don't know, maybe L T U and City Attorney's Office don't think it's as cool as I do, is that what we're trying to do with this is not only coordinate with the City of Lincoln, but coordinate with developers on adjacent properties so that we can construct ultimately with this agreement and another interlocal agreement, or another agreement just with the developers, the turn lanes and some of the other improvements that need to be made. So theoretically, theoretically, we could construct this corridor and then not have to come back and tear it up right away, because that's what people hate to see. Hey, I don't know if I can get there, but I know I have a dream, and I appreciate that my dream was honored by L T U and also by your, your City Attorney's Office and the County Attorney's Office. So it's taken us a little while to get here. We're hopeful, if everything stays in line, that we'll be able to put this project out to bid through an Arrest Department of Transportation in October for construction next year. It is a federal aid project, so we could get snagged in the process. I can't make any guarantees, but the goal is to get some pavement on the ground.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for, for Pam? Yes, Councilwoman?
No questions, but a comment, a thank you. I share your dream, having the road corridor done in one swoop, one fell swoop instead of in pieces, is much better. Thank you.
I'm sure the people along that's gonna, you'll be missing that dust storm, though.
Really? I, I don't think they will, Councilman, I don't think they will.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
I won't speak. I'll just say we do share the dream that she has, but just for the development side, because we are, it would be the Rattlesnake Drive and Falls Branch Road that will serve the developments on both sides that will be connecting them. I know that may be a question that comes up, on which areas will actually be connected, but those will be two of the main roads and developments that'll be impacted.
That is Wondering Creek and Iron Ridge, or Fire Ridge, or?
Oh, no.
I can't remember the, the one on the east, but Wondering Creek nonetheless. Okay. Very good. Okay, very good. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5B? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to 5C.
Item 5C is approving the participating provider agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, and Involve Dental Inc. to allow the dental clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement of dental services provided for Medicaid-enrolled clients starting January 1st, 2024.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 5C? Hello?
Good afternoon, I'm Gwendy McGuinness. I'm the Dental Health and Nutrition Services Manager at the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, 3131 O Street. Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services has awarded their new Medicaid managed care contracts that will be effective January 1st of 2024. Those three health plans will now include dental services as a part of each health plan. So this contract is with Involve, which is Nebraska Total Care's dental benefits provider. This contract will allow our dental clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement for those services that we provide to the participants enrolled in this health plan. And these Medicaid fees that we are collecting as a part of these health, health plans, they are a part of the council-adopted operating budget. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any questions for Ms. McGuinness? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on this item? Anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5C? Okay, very good, let's move on to 5D.
Item 5D is approving the state funds grant renewal between the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health, Tobacco-Free Nebraska, and the City of Lincoln, on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department in the amount of $657,495 for a program goals of reducing secondhand smoke, e-cigarette exposure, preventing youth tobacco e-cigarette initiation, reducing tobacco e-cigarette disparities, and promoting local cess, cessate, excuse me, cessation resources for the period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th of 2025.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Health Department went around after another.
They're in order. Good afternoon, David Humm with the Health Department. I'm the Division Manager for Health Promotion and Outreach. And before you hear, this is just a grant renewal for our Tobacco Prevention Program. Pays for two tobacco educators and, and work in the community with our coalitions and working on tobacco and vaping provision.
Are there any questions for our testifier? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on this item? Anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5D? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 5E.
Item 5E is comprehensive plan conformance 23008, application of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department to amend new water pumping storage project by moving the 98th Street Transmission Main ahead of the fiscal year 2223 and 2324, and to amend the new water supply wells project by moving horizontal collection well number five to fiscal year 2223, and adding horizontal collection well number six to fiscal year 2223, and appropriating funding for said projects.
Director Elliott.
Good afternoon, Liz Elliott, Director of Transportation and Utilities. Excited to be here today as we are able to move forward a few of our water projects due to the ARPA funding that we received from the state legislature as part of LB 814, this last legislative session. Essentially, what we are doing is we are moving up the timelines for two projects, our 98th Street Transmission Main and Horizontal Collector Well number five. These both will accommodate additional and new water supply. The 98th Street Main will eventually be the main where our new water source, our new second source of water, will connect into the city at. We're also adding a Horizontal Collector Well number six. This was the one thing that was not in our current CIP, because we were expecting it to be more than six years out. So with the ARPA funding, we are able to advance that and get it into our current six-year CIP using those, about $200 million in ARPA funding. So we're excited that we're able to advance these projects. Ultimately, it will be less expensive to do them, because we're able to do them sooner rather than later, and we'll be able to get some additional water supply even through our Ashland Plant while we work on building and developing that second source of water.
Are there questions for Director Elliott at this point? Yes, Councilwoman, sorry.
Thank you. Director Elliott, I noticed that today 98th Street is a popular corridor, and so I'm assuming that this means that this project will be well timed with the road paving?
It is. You, we probably couldn't have asked for a better timing, because we can plan in advance with all of these projects. This will ultimately be on the northern end of 98th Street, but keeping in mind the bigger picture of the entire north-south corridor of 98th. This is perfect timing that will be able to align everything and hopefully just hit the area one time, and not have to come back in and tear up new roads or, or development that might be coming through there. So it's well timed. There will be here in the next few weeks also an amendment to our current existing agreement with the State Department of Natural Resources, because that's where the ARPA funding is coming through. So that amendment, we were a year and a half ago given $20 million of ARPA funds, then this year it was a little over $177 million. So we're gonna do an amendment bringing all of that into one contract. So that'll be before you here in a couple of weeks.
All right. Any other questions for Director Elliott? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5E? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 5F.
Item 5F is comprehensive plan conformance 23009, application of the Director of Urban Development to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the North 27th Street Corridor and Environments Redevelopment Plan to add the Epworth Church redevelopment project to redevelop the historic design church into 10 to 12 apartments in a neighborhood service facility on property generally located at 2980 Holdridge Street.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers, Hallie Salem, Urban Development Department, 555, South 10th Street, Suite 205. This afternoon, we're asking for a comprehensive plan conformance for the Epworth Church Redevelopment Project Amendment to the North 27th Street Redevelopment Plan. The developer plans on renovating the historic church at 2980 Holdridge Street. That includes, the project includes residential units and looking to add potential services to the first floor as well. I'll share with you the project area for the project. So overhead, this is Clinton Elementary here, Holdridge Street, 31st Street, here is Epworth Church. Here's what Epworth Church looks like, for those of you unfamiliar with it, right next to Clinton Elementary, kind of surrounded on two sides by Clinton Elementary. The developer did have a meeting with the Clinton Neighborhood Association, received positive feedback from the association, although there was a concern brought up about the north-south alley. And I'll just show you on here where that alley is located along this side and included in the project area. So part of the discussions for the redevelopment agreement have been that alley. There are other scope of work improvements to the actual building, roofing, stone tuck pointing and cleaning, rehabilitation and replacement of windows that are also being discussed. The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the North 27th Street Corridor and Environments Redevelopment Plan, and the Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan. It will provide for an adaptive reuse of a historic structure, provide for infill redevelopment utilizing existing infrastructure facilities, and contribute to Lincoln's housing stock and affordable housing stock. The community in 2050 would like to see approximately 25% of all new dwelling units being infill, and so this project will contribute to that. On June 14th, the Planning Commission voted 9-0 in approval of this project, finding conformance with the comprehensive plan. The Historic Preservation Committee voted approval at their January 19th meeting. They are going, Epworth is going back to historic preservation this Thursday for discussion about their facade improvements. The church was designated as a local landmark in March, and then a special permit was approved for the site at the same time as the landmark designation change. We are, as mentioned, working toward the redevelopment agreement, which means it would be back in front of you for approval of the use of TIF. The developer- The developer, Scott Sullivan, is here and can answer questions, as well as Ernie Castillo, project manager for the project. So be happy to entertain any questions or be available afterward.
Very good. Any questions for Hallie or Scott or Ernie? Okay, see none. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, oh, I apologize. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this particular item, item 5F? Anyone else here to speak on item 5F? All right, see none. Let's move on to 5G.
Item 5G is miscellaneous 23004, application of the Director of Urban Development Department to declare the 56th, 70th, and Fletcher redevelopment area generally located between 56th Street on the west, Salt Creek on the north, 84th Street on the east, and Fletcher Avenue on the south, blighted and substandard.
Mr. C.
Good afternoon, Timothy. On behalf of the Urban Development Department, what you have in front of you is a request to designate about 1,000 acres of ground located east of 56th Street, north of Fletcher Avenue, all the way up to Salt Creek, and then over to 84th Street as blighted and substandard. Rather than relying on my description, we'll put it up here. So the crosshatched blue area is the area that would be declared blighted and substandard under this declaration. You see here 56th on the west, 84th over here on the east. Salt Creek is on the north. Fletcher runs here on the south. So a study was done by Hannah Kealan examining this area for the conditions of blighted and substandard. Their findings, I think, are included in the study that was found in your packet. I'll highlight just a few of them. They indicated they found three of the four substandard factors to have a strong presence in the area, some of those including age or obsolescence related to the age of the structures in the area. They average approximately 46 years. There is an inadequate provision for ventilation, light air sanitation, or open spaces. That's a term that's used in the community development law to define substandard. And what they noted there was some water and sanitary sewer remains that were outdated or obsolete materials that may need to be replaced. And then as it relates to, they noted seven of 12 blight factors having a strong presence in the area. And I think, I'll switch out the maps here because I think this one will show it for you a little better. The red is the outline of the blighted area. But a couple of the things that are mentioned within the definition of blighted are inadequate street and roadway systems, as well as some maybe obsolete or just not yet completed plating of the area. So as you'll see here, you'll have some large parcels within the area that don't have a road system going through them. That makes it more difficult to develop. Likewise, you actually have street dedicated along this curve. There is no street there if you go to that location. So there are some conditions in the area that would qualify this as blighted and substandard. Again, this is just the first step in the redevelopment process. This is a conditioned proceeding to using the tools available under the community development law and TIF eventually. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the council might have.
Any questions for Mr. C, interim Director C? Yes, Councilwoman.
Is this in the floodplain?
There is. I will show you without tremendous specificity, but wait for it to come up here. Yeah, so Salt Creek runs along the north side of it here. There is some floodway and floodplain up in this area here. Yeah, that's a significant, a significant part of the challenges up here.
Any other questions, Councilman Duden?
No.
All right, very good. Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. C, I think the report said that some of these acres, the 1,000 acres, were outside the city limits.
Yes.
Can you show me where those 200 acres are?
So the acres that are outside the city limits are bounded on the west here, over to Cornusker, up to the north to 84th Street, and then here. So it's these three parcels.
And then would you remind me and maybe other folks, I don't have a clear memory of what allows us to blight something outside city limits?
Well, I think we can declare it blighted and substandard. We would not be able to move forward with any kind of redevelopment work until it was annexed into the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. C? Okay, see none. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski, C. Christin Kalkowski Law Firm, appearing today on behalf of Nebco. Nebco's a pretty significant landowner of property within this area that's being designated as blighted and substandard, both on the east and the west sides of 70th Street. They're supportive of this designation. This is an area in our community that's appropriate for industrial development, and so we're always looking for sites that are available for new users and existing companies within our city to grow. So this is a great area for that. It's also an area that often gets put out for proposals by L-PED and the Lincoln Chamber. So having this designation kind of gets us one step further to being on the list of having some opportunities to show folks maybe coming to town or trying to grow their business that there's a potential to utilize some TIF dollars to help with the development of this area. So just also asking for your support of the designation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Danae? No?
Great, thank you.
See none. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5G? Well, you're fine.
Don't run.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
If you could just please start with your name and your address. Yep, thank you.
5311 Eminence Road, and I rise in opposition to this. Actually, I got a question. Could you have this here on 5G, but you also have it on the pending list? There's a same proposal, 9D. I mean, I suppose, I guess you just do. I don't know how that happens, but that's my first question there. You got basically in two different places. But again, it's amazing they can take these definitions and make, make the project fit the definition. I drove out there, the roads there probably aren't in worse shape than maybe the neighborhood roads, really. And some roads, yeah, there's no roads because it's cornfield. There, I think, there are only about three or four roads going through the whole thing. The other road just lead into the shops and warehouses they have out there. And actually, they didn't look that bad a shape to me either. But again, it's only about two or three roads that run directly, actually, I think there's only two. They run from one end to the other, from 56th to, well, none of them run up to 84th. So there's only a couple, three roads there in the first place. Again, we're 1,000 acres. I would say less than 10% of this is developed. I'd say basically they're offering, I'm asking you, take 900 acres of cornfield and make it blighted and substandard. Again, I, I just don't see how that can happen. Yeah, they don't have, you know, adequate roads or they have no roads. They don't have adequate sewer because they have no sewer. They don't have water? No, because there's no water. It's cornfield. And then I'll have, well, that overlay showed, again, all the blue areas are, again, it's cornfield. And of course, the only reason we want to do this is so that later on, people can apply for TIF and take our tax dollars. And then for the 10 acres that aren't, 20 acres that aren't cornfield, go ahead, but I, I cannot support this being cornfield as blighted and substandard. Thank you.
Any questions for our testifier? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 5G? Anyone else here for item 5G? All right, see none. Let's move on, Madam Clerk.
We can now vote on these items. Call item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for June 16 through June 30, 2023, introduced by Duden.
So move.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyess?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5B is approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County for the South 98th Street improvements from Old Cheney to A Street, introduced by Duden.
So move.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. All right, see none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyess?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5C is approving the participating provider agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department and INVOLV Dental Inc. to allow the dental clinic to submit for Medicaid reimbursement of dental services provided for Medicaid enrolled clients starting January 1, 2024, introduced by Duden.
So move.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyess?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5D is approving the state funds grant renewal between the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health, Tobacco-Free Nebraska, and the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department in the amount of $657,495 for program goals of reducing secondhand smoke e-cigarette exposure, preventing youth tobacco e-cigarette initiation, reducing tobacco e-cigarette disparities, and promoting local cessation resources for the period of July 1, 23 through June 30, 25, introduced by Duden.
So move.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyess?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5E is comprehensive plan conformance 23008, application of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department to amend new water pumping storage project by moving the 98th Street Transmission Main ahead of fiscal year 2223 and moving the 98th Street, excuse me, and the 2324, and to amend the new water supply wells project by moving horizontal collection well number five to fiscal year 2223 and adding horizontal collection well number six to fiscal year 2223 and appropriating funding for said projects, introduced by Duden.
So move.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none. I just want to take this quick opportunity to thank not only the Nebraska Legislature for their allocation of these dollars for these particular uses, but also, you know, our federal partners as well, President Biden, both Houses of Congress, for passing this funding as it filtered through the states and now down to the City of Lincoln to expand our, our supply wells. This project would not have happened without our federal and state partners, and just wanted to take a moment to thank them for this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckyess?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 5F is comprehensive plan conformance 23009, application of the Director of Urban Development to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the North 27th Street Corridor and Environments Redevelopment Plan to add the Epworth Church redevelopment project to redevelop the historic design church to 10 to 12 apartments in a neighborhood service facility on property generally located at 2980 Holdridge Street, introduced by Duden.
So move.
Second.
Second. Carlson, discussion. See none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyess?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 5 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 6, our public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. I'll be calling item 6A, amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by X.
This is our Barb McIntyre, Human Resources Director, 575 South 10th Street, and this is our annual cost of living adjustment, adjustment for the X group. It is 3%.
Any questions for Director McIntyre? All right, see none. Let's see if there's anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6A. Oh, Director McIntyre, don't go far. Anyone else here to speak on item 6A? All right, let's move on to 6B.
Item 6B is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by W.
The annual cost of living adjustment, and for the W group, it's 3% also.
Questions for Director McIntyre? All right, see none. Let's see if there's anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6B. Anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6B? All right, see none. Let's move on to 6C.
6C is amending pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by E.
Yep, this is a cost of living adjustment also, and for group E, it is 3%.
Any questions for Director McIntyre on item 6C? All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6C? See none, let's move on to 6D.
6D is amending pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned by pay ranges prefixed by P.
Yep, these are for our police officers and our sergeants. It is 6.5% for an officer and 4.5% for a sergeant.
Okay, very good. A little bit of a change.
Little bit of a change.
Yep, a higher annual increase. Any questions for Director McIntyre regarding this particular pay schedule? All right, let's see if there's anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6E. Oh, I'm sorry, D. I apologize. I've gotten ahead of myself. Anyone else here to speak on item 6D? All right, see none. Now let's move on to item 6E.
6E, amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by B.
Yep, this group is getting a 3% cost of living adjustment.
Any, any questions for Director McIntyre on 6E? All right, see none. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 6E? See none, let's move on to 6F.
6F is amending pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting its schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by A.
Yep, this group is getting a 3% cost of living adjustment also.
Any questions for Director McIntyre on 6F? All right, see none. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 6F? Anyone here for item 6F? See none, let's move on to 6G.
6G is amending pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned by pay ranges prefixed by C. This adjustment is in accordance with the terms of the party's current bargaining agreement.
And they are receiving a 3% cost of living adjustment.
Any questions on 6G? See none. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on item 6G? Item 6G. See none, let's move on to 6H.
6H is amending pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by DSS.
And this group is getting a 3% cost of living adjustment also.
Questions for Director McIntyre on 6H? On 6H? All right, see none. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on item 6H? Item 6H. See none, let's move on to 6I.
6I is amending pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, biweekly, hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the City of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by M.
And this is a 3% cost of living adjustment also.
Any questions on item 6I? See none. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on item 6I? Item 6I. See none. Director McIntyre, you made it through. Thank you very much. Let's move on to our next item, item 6J.
Item 6J, street and alley vacation 23002, application of Nebco, Inc. to vacate the street of right-of-way from Watermark Road for the west line of North 70th Street and west approximately 815.22 inches, laying feet, excuse me, lying adjacent to property generally
Let's move on to our next item, item six J.
Item six J, street and alley vacation two-three-zero-zero-two, application of NEPCO Inc. to vacate the street of right-of-way from Watermark Road for the west line of North Seventieth Street and west approximately eight hundred and fifteen point twenty, point two-two inches, laying feet, excuse me, lying adjacent to property generally located approximately at point seven-five miles north of the intersection of North Seventieth Street and Fletcher Avenue.
Mr. C.
Yes, Councilmember, Assistant, oh, different hat, Interim Director of Urban Development, Tim C., here before you today on a street and alley vacation. This is Watermark Road, you'll see it on the screen. What you'll see here is really what was half of Watermark Road, so when this parcel was created, they dedicated this right-of-way, which would be the south, south half of the street and what would have been a cul-de-sac. The parcels on both sides are now owned by NEPCO Inc., with both sides being owned by the same entity, there's no longer a need to have that right-of-way in there. So when that, when a development proposal were to come through for this project, or for that property, the streets could be dedicated at that point in time with the project. So that's what's before you today. I would tell you, location-wise, you have Seventieth Street here on the, on the east, Salt Creek is up here, just off of the map, Fleur Avenue is to the south, so we're in, again, up in the, up in that industrial area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Interim Director C? Any questions? All right. All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item six J? Anyone else here for item six J? All right, seeing none, let's move on to items six K and six L.
I'll be calling item six K and six L together. Six K is text amendment two-three-zero-zero-eight, request of Family Service Lincoln to amend Lincoln Municipal Code Section two-seven-point-six-three-point-six-ten, Neighborhood Support Services to remove the condition set forth in subparagraph B, in order to allow Neighborhood Support Services to be located in any new or existing structures, and to remove the requirement, the structure be adjacent to a park, school, places of religious assembly, or neighborhood center. Item six L, related item special permit two-three-zero-two-one, appeal by Jessica Lehman of Planning Commission, approval of special permit two-three-zero-two-one, to allow for community unit plan, CUP, to develop ten dwelling units, a Neighborhood Support Services Center, and a community garden with associated waivers on the property generally located at the northwest corner of North Fifty-second and Holdridge Streets.
Thank you. This is a continued public hearing on some items here. If we have folks here from Family Service that would like to speak, please come on forward. Mr. Gergen?
Yes, thank you. Tim Gergen, ten-ten Lincoln Mall, Clark and Anderson. And get our bearings straight with this project. So we'll be talking mainly about the special permit here. The special permit was a discussion with the city staff that prompted the text amendment that's before you here as well. The text amendment was drafted by the City of Lincoln in support with us as well. City planning staff determined that they've had enough of applicants wanting to do this style of, of development, but didn't meet all the ordinances in the text amendment, and thought it was more of a barrier than it was a, an accomplishment to the code, so therefore you have the text amendment before you. Right here, what you have is Holdridge Street along here, you have North Forty-eighth Street here, we have the new mixed-use development that was just recently done in the last few years, and Dead Man's Run here. What's in red is our development proposal. I'll put a little bit. We have a vacated alley here, we have a vacated alley in this location, as you can see very dimly, we have eleven existing, or ten existing planted lots right now within the block that's within our development. This is our development plan. We're going to have ten units posed along Fifty-first Street here, we're going to have our Neighborhood Support Service post at the corner of Fifty-second and Holdridge Street, we're going to have a community and garden open space here along Holdridge Street, right at the crossing of Holdridge Street, where we got a water quality and detention basin located here to help offset our stormwater. We're going to have a parking lot located off of Fifty-second Street here, and then an alley going here to serve these residential units. Here's our grading plan. Due to the floodplain of Dead Man's Run, we have about a five-foot of floodplain depth that we're dealing with in this, we're elevating all of these residential units, they will not have a basement to account for the floodplain. Our Neighborhood Support Services building will also be elevated to not be in the floodplain, and we're, this is where our, all of our stormwater is being directed to the middle of the lot here to account for our stormwater detention, retention, and we'll be piping that into the storm sewer system of Fifty-second Street. We have met with city staff quite numerous, we've had a neighborhood meeting as well, we've been before Planning Commission, we've had a, a public hearing, we were approved unanimously through our special permit as well. We have the architect, Jeff Deold, that will go over a little bit more of the architecture of the units, and then we have Dennis Hoffman with Family Services who'll talk, talk a little bit about the, the program and what we'll be doing within the development.
All right, very good. Before we, please come on up, but before we move on, do we have specific questions for Mr. Gergen at this point in time? Yes, Mr. Duden.
What feeds this retention pond, basin?
So, yes. So our stormwater, our grading plan, is directing our stormwater to the middle of the block here.
Okay, go ahead now.
Yeah, so our stormwater is going to be sited in the middle of the block, we have a storm sewer pipe here that's going to drain that into the storm sewer system in Fifty-second Street. We've worked with watershed development all throughout this process. Fifty-second Street is the larger storm sewer system in this area. It does have a low part that is, oh, I'd say it's a little bit under capacity, just two blocks north of this, it's on watershed's list to be fixed, repaired, but this is what was worked out with watershed and ourselves to help offset any of the stormwater that is going to be accumulated on the site.
Will that be fenced in, so that kids don't play in it?
It will not be fenced in, it will only hold water for about twenty-four hours after it rains. It's not intended to always be a permanent pond, it's got gradual slopes, three-to-one slopes, so it won't have any large slopes that any kids would fall in and get hurt. It's a fairly shallow, it's about three foot deep.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Gergen at this point in time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gergen, real quickly, it looks like from your grading plan there that you are on the townhomes there on the west side, you're just taking the structures themselves out of the floodplain, not the lots?
That's correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions?
And, wait a second.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Let's just leave the, the graphic there for just a small.
Jeff's got better exhibits than I do.
Okay. Is the same true of the community or neighborhood center there, the service center that it's also elevated out of the floodplain?
That is correct.
Just not as steep a slope?
That, that is correct. The, the, since it's a larger building, we have more area, it's a little bit easier to offset the, the grades.
Okay, all right, understood, thank you.
Very good. All right, I think we're ready for the pretty pictures, probably.
Jeff Deold, seventeen seventeen Vincent Street in Omaha, and I'm representing Deold Anderson Architecture, the architects on the project. And I'm going to give you a, a sort of a brief overview or some context on the architecture of the buildings and some thought process on how we're organizing the development. So as Tim mentioned, the residential units, which are going to be, ten of them are going to be located along Ayles, along North Fifty-second up to Aylesworth. The units themselves are organized in a series of duplex and triplex-style buildings. Each of them will be two floors with roughly sixteen hundred square feet per unit and three to four bedrooms targeting families for these units. The community center will be on the corner of Holdridge and North Fifty-second Street, and generally it's organized into a gymnasium that's geared towards after-school activities, so it's not really sized for league events or anything that's going to have a lot of parking or a lot of population, it's really just for after-school activities. It would also have a rec room, some back-of-house support spaces for offices for staff and restrooms, a maker's space, and then two to three classrooms at the north of the building. The row houses and the community center define an open area that we've reserved on the development site for the bio-retention pond that Tim mentioned, a playground that we think is really important and really talks to the, the community center, and a community garden that will be on Holdridge Street that will be run by Community, Community Crops, One and Family Service Lincoln's Partners. And then finally on the site, we'll have the, the parking, which will be accessed off of North Fifty-second Street. Roughly, the, the residents, or the residential units will be a series of duplexes and triplexes, and they'll have a sort of a gable-style roof to match the context of the neighborhood along with lap siding, which would be fiber cement board, so a high-quality material. The community center would also have a pitched or a sloped roof to fit in with the neighborhood context. On this image here, facing west, would be the primary entrance or the, the front of the community center facing the open space, so on the right would be Holdridge, on the left here would be the parking lot, so the, the roofline goes from higher here where we have taller ceilings that we're trying to accommodate in the gymnasium, and then it slopes down towards the north as we cover the, the primary entrance, the back-of-house spaces, and then finally to the classrooms on the north. This would be the east elevation facing the parking lot with windows into the classrooms. The elevation facing North Fifty-second Street into the east would mimic the roof profile of the, the west elevation with smaller windows facing those residence where we have classrooms, back-of-house spaces, and then the gymnasium here. And then finally, the elevation facing Holdridge would have the taller roof, a roof overhang, and some color blocking, and some minimal signage directing visitors to North Fifty-second where the parking would be. And then finally, this would be a view from the community gardens and the open space facing the, the west of the building, and sort of describing the materials that we're thinking of that would be similar to a, a vertical siding, so again, meet the scale of the neighborhood, and then a lot of features, sort of steps and bleacher seating connecting down from the elevated plane down to the open space, so we're really trying to enhance that connection between the open space and the community center. Unless you have any other, any questions? If you're available.
Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman.
All right. Thank you for coming down and explaining, and I'm going to ask you to put maybe the last drawing that you had, and then the one that faces Holdridge, if you could have that one handy. First, we received letters and I, and in reviewing the Planning Commission hearing, there was some concern about neighborhood design standards and whether, and how you met those, and I think you just described that, but if you would just summarize again how you met the design standards, neighborhood design standards here?
Yeah, so we're implementing a pitched roof, so we're not doing a, a flat roof, so we don't want this to feel commercial or anything like that. You know, it is a, a, a community center, so it is a commercial building in nature, so we're trying to meet the standards by having a, a, this pitched roof that mimics the gable roofs you often find in residential neighborhoods, or the gable roofs that we're using in the townhomes, and so we're doing that and we're trying to break down the scale of it, so it doesn't feel like a large, hulking mess. And then the other things that we're doing are, we're using a, a metal panel that is mimicking vertical siding, and it would have sort of a wood grain appearance or look. And then we're further breaking down the scale of the building. I mentioned color blocking, which would be these fiber cement panels, which are, we're not tied to the colors, but we, we have a sort of a varied scheme of these green hues, and those would mimic the size of windows where we don't actually have windows, and sort of make, break down the scale of the elevations.
And then, I didn't notice, I didn't see that you had a height waiver requested, but I am curious, what are the heights of all of the buildings, the townhomes and the neighborhood And maybe I'm going to want to know the height of the, the peak of the gable from, like, the front step up, and also from the raised elevation when you add in the, it looked like about, just short of four foot, is it about three and a half foot elevation rise?
Yeah, so if I address the community center first, the finished floor would be five to six feet off the grade plane, and then from the grade plane also to this peak, which is our tallest peak, we're just under thirty-five feet, and then within the municipal code, we're actually measuring the building height between this peak and then this point here, so it ends up being right above thirty feet for the, for the height of the community center.
Thank you.
The townhomes likewise are elevated five to six feet above the grade plane, and we have roughly a, a ten-foot floor-to-floor height, so we would have fifteen to the second floor, twenty-five to the, the ceiling of the second floor, and then the peak would be approximately another ten feet, so that's about thirty-five feet, again, measured to the halfway point, we're somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five feet. So a, a height waiver would not be required.
Okay, and do you know what the capacity of the neighborhood center is? Broken it down by the gymnasium and the other spaces, or?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you that, I'm sorry.
All right, I can. You, okay. Thank you. I think for right now, I am done with questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions for the architect at this point?
I was going to ask how much square foot for the gym and these other structures?
Yeah, so the, the community center measures to just over twelve thousand square feet in total. And then, say, the footprint of the duplex would be sixteen hundred square feet.
For the, for the townhomes?
Yes, yes. Or twenty-four hundred square feet for the triplexes.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move on to Mr. Hoffman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Dennis Hoffman, Executive Director at Family Service Lincoln, five oh one South Seventh Street. So I'd like to share a little bit of information about Family Service, our history, our programs, and what we're proposing to do with Fifty-One Commons. Okay, so the picture shown is our administrative office, just to give you some reference. We're located south of the Hay Market, we own and operate this building as well. Family Service has a long history in Lincoln. We were established in eighteen ninety-one, making us more than a hundred and thirty years old, so we carry a lot of pride with that history, we're also proud that we've been able to evolve over the years to meet the needs of our community and the families that we serve. We've always maintained a focus on community well-being. Today, we employ about two hundred people, and we operate with a twelve million, eleven million, twelve million dollar budget. Our mission at Family Service is helping families thrive. It's simple, but it also really well describes what we do as an organization and how we impact the communities and the families that we serve. We make this mission through six core programs. As you can see on the screen, Behavioral Health is our school-based therapy program where we provide counseling services to students at approximately forty schools in Lincoln Public Schools, and then also in surrounding counties. Our youth development program is the before-and-after school program, we're located in twenty-one LPS schools. We're located in 21 LPS schools and eight of those are community learning centers. Community Crops is actually more than a partner now. It's actually a program of Family Service Lincoln. They joined with us in January of this year. And even though they have a 20-year history, they are now a program of of Family Service like the others listed here. CCFP is a food program that operates across the state of Nebraska to help in-home childcare providers receive USDA reimbursement for serving healthy meals and snacks. Housing and Support Services is fairly new to us, too. That program started during the pandemic in response to people's increased need for affordable housing. And since then, we've been able to expand that program and then currently are operating about five programs through that, including a youth homeless demonstration project grant through HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department. And finally, WIC, hopefully you're familiar with that, is a food benefit program for mothers and their children. Three of these programs will be directly involved with 51 Commons, and those are the Youth Development Program, Housing, of course, and then, of course, Community Crops. So a little bit about the program that we're proposing at 51 Commons. We refer to it as a STEAM Center, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. It's a common practice to provide that for really at all ages, but our focus is on elementary kids. Our intent is to provide services during non-school days and then also summer camps during the summer. LPS has about 20 non-school days throughout the school calendar, so we would offer programming during that time so parents could go to work or do what they need to do during the day, drop their kids off in the morning, and then pick them up in the evening after they're returning home from work. Similar to summer program, you're probably all familiar, there's a lot of summer program programs going on in Lincoln. This would add to that and would be a dedicated space. And as Jeff described, a really unique space that focuses on large areas where kids thrive and do better. And research shows that kids do well in that open environment where they can move around freely with structure and staff support. And that not only helps them in that social emotional world, but also helps them learn better. The other uses for the building are not as defined, but also would be used for neighborhood support, such as community meetings, neighborhood association meetings if they'd like, those type of things that we could just give back to that neighborhood. Training Center would be more internal for Family Service. We have a lot of staff members and they do have required training that they attend. So it would just provide us a large space to do that. And then also kind of unique is a nonprofit collaboration space where we could offer the space to other nonprofits that are in the area, such as Blick's Theater that's located in Unite Place. The housing component is affordable housing. What we found and what we see through other initiatives in Lincoln like Prosper Lincoln and also the City of Lincoln's Affordable Housing Plan, that there is a great need for affordable housing in Lincoln. The target group would be families who are at or below 185% of poverty. The housing would also come with support services that would be provided by our case managers on an as-needed basis. So if a family needed help accessing other resources in the community, planning a budget, planning a meal, we call them generalists where they can really do whatever is needed to help meet those families' needs to make sure that they're successful in their housing. Like Jeff said, the units are two and three bedrooms, so families with children is really who we intend to rent to. And we will take Section 8 housing as a way to help pay for the the rent. Family Service will also manage those apartments, not only the apartments, but also the grounds so we can ensure the community that it will stay a nice-looking place. We have a long history in this community, so we want to make sure our reputation stays strong. And one way that I think we can do that is to be good stewards of the property. Also mentioned was Community Gardens, which Community Crops will manage, like was mentioned. The way that works is neighbors or residents that are living at 51 Commons can lease essentially a plot, and they're usually 100 square feet, and then they can garden on it. The cost is nominal, usually it's $10 and goes up to 75, it's based on income. But it will also be available to the neighbors as well if if they would like to use that. So it's not just limited to the residents at 51 Commons. There's a lot of benefits to Community Garden. Not only does it provide a way for families to grow their own nutritious food, but it's also provides other well-being benefits as well, such as stress rejection and helping to manage mental health and just a way to get outside and and be in the air. The screen shows what it's an annual report from the 2021 14th and Hudson Garden, which is sponsored by Brian Health. And you can see there's more benefits listed there from having a community garden in the neighborhood. The one that really stood out to me, and I'm new to this, too, because like I said, we just started working with Community Crops in January. But some of the things that blow me away is just the amount of food that you can grow on a fairly small amount of space. This plot is 3,600 square feet and they produce over 2,000 pounds of food just from that one garden. So kind of fun, cool stuff. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Let's see if we have any further questions for Mr. Hoffman. Any questions at this point? Yes?
I have one. Can you talk about the green space a little bit, too? Would that be only utilized by the residents or tenants there? Or is that community access type green space? Or is that similar to what the Community Crops, people from outside would be coming in there?
We will not put up signs, no trespassing signs or anything like that. It will be private property, but we would not discourage use from the community.
How are you going to keep the soccer balls out of the garden?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, that's a great one, and kids in general. I think there was a question about capacity, where we don't have capacity set by Building and Safety or the Fire Department at this time. We operate on a 1 to 15 ratio, meaning that 15 students to one staff member. This building would hold about 50 to 60 students, so we would have 50 to 60 kids participating in the program and four staff persons on at any time during the time we were actually running the program.
And if I could follow that up with another question? Thanks for that answer. When you look at the capacity of the childcare, whether it's, I was sort of curious to find out if it was mostly elementary or some younger kids?
No, we would just do elementary only.
And so will this replace or add to the CLCs that you're a part of?
It would just add to. So we would not change the structure of our community learning centers now. We will still operate out of schools. Riley and Huntington are our two closest and for elementary, and then we're also in Daz and Goodrich for middle school. So we would continue to operate out of those programs on a daily basis. This would be just for non-school days and then summer camps when LPS is closed and then for special events.
And would you expect to draw from the same neighborhood for?
Yeah, yeah. The way that we currently operate summer programming and non-school days is we lease space from Lincoln Public Schools, and it does draw from the neighborhood. So for instance, if we run a camp or a a non-school day at Huntington, it's primarily just Huntington families that will attend that. So I I'm hoping that we catch a bigger net like Riley, Huntington, and those surrounding schools on around the 52nd and Holdridge area will attend. But really, it does just draw in that, and that would be our target group to serve that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hoffman? I do have one question for you, and perhaps it's too soon, and I don't know if another member of your team may want to answer it or not, but to piggyback off of Councilman Carlson's question, the play lawn that's being depicted here on the site plan, are we envisioning just plain green open space? Are we envisioning any sort of play, something that?
Like play equipment?
Play equipment, anything like that? Or is it too early to?
Yeah, too early to tell, but we are talking about having play equipment there, too. And it'd be similar in scale to like a small school.
Sure.
Or a church or something like that.
Okay. And then you also mentioned the gymnasium and perhaps rec room being used for community meeting space a little bit. The the reason I'm asking these questions is because we, before us, we have a text amendment that's that's stating that moving away from the ideology of necessarily needing to place neighborhood support services with a a community center or a park, but it seems like that those are elements that are being encompassed right here on this particular site. You've you've spoken about the the play lawn, the acts, the community access to the gym. It it seems as though that the general public will have some access to these services regardless of whether or not they're involved in Family Service at all.
Correct, yeah, that can be an option.
Okay, okay. Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Hoffman or his team?
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
I have.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I have a a question of LTU because there were a lot of concerns around stormwater and?
Do you want to take testimony first or do you want to go?
We can take testimony first, and that would give LTU an opportunity to come back down to the first floor.
Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and take public testimony at this point in time, and then we'll take staff questions after that, because I do believe we have some folks here that want to testify, and let's let them do that and get them through that process. So Sonya, do you want to give us the rules of the road again?
Yes. As a reminder, testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Speakers should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and state if you are speaking in favor, opposition, or neutral on that item. The clerks will use the light system to help aid your timing for testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided, and they're both on both daisies here. Testimony can be done at both locations as well. Green will indicate the start time for your testimony. Yellow would be the indicator for one minute remaining. Red would also be indicator for your stop time. Also, because of the continued public hearing from the week prior, those that have testified last week, please limit to limit your testimony to new information that you can provide.
All right, very good. Well, let's go ahead. If anyone would like to testify on this item, now is the time to do so. Reminders, five minutes to testify. If you testified last week, this is a continued public hearing, so we would just simply ask that your testimony this time would be limited to new information only. Yes, sir, do you have a question?
On changing the code or is this on the whole system?
We will hear items both in terms of the text amendment as well as the special permit. So we will hear items on both at this point in time. So Item 6K and Item 6L. Does that make sense?
Not really. I think we should finish 6K before you get to 6L.
Well, would you would you like to to speak on Item 6L?
I would, but I want to see if 6K passes first. If 6K pass, does not pass, is it even logical to talk about 6L?
Yep, so today we will not have a voting session on either of these items. This is simply public testimony, so we won't know until actually next week if either item passes. So now's your opportunity to speak on Item 6L if you'd like to do so.
Question.
Why don't you come on down so we can get you on the microphone?
So if someone was not able to attend last week, but they are able to attend this week, would they get two separate sections of five minutes in order to address each item?
We're hearing both items now for Item 6K and 6L. If they feel like they cannot get both of those items adequately addressed in five minutes, I I could give them a little bit more time, but not much.
Okay, give me a minute.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on Item 6K or 6L? Yes, sir, come on down. Anyone who would like to testify?
I'll just be running the projector for my neighbor here.
Okay, very good. Sir, could you please start with your name and address?
My name's Craig Hallers. Live at 1525 North 51st.
Okay.
All right. I got two questions first. Can I ask questions or am I just limited to reading?
You can ask questions. We may not answer them at this point in time. We may direct them to staff afterwards, but you can ask questions at this point.
When else could they be answered, maybe at a better time?
Well, we can take your questions and ask them of staff if that's the appropriate place to ask.
Okay, fine, I'm burning time. You said that these structures were going to be five feet off the ground, correct? They're going to be elevated five feet.
Sir, if you could just please direct your comments to me, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, same question. They were to be elevated five feet.
Okay.
All right, to get out of the floodplain.
Okay. Where's the lawn?
Is the lawn gonna come up five feet to the building? Is lawn going to be sloped then? Or is there going to just be stairs going up to five feet to the structure?
We will ask the applicant that when they come back.
Okay, that's very good. Number two, is that catch basin? What water is it catching?
Okay.
Is it catching water off the roofs, just runoff off the ground? Or just exactly what water is it catching?
Sir, we will ask the applicant that.
Very good, thank you. All right, I said last week that because Paragraph E prevents a neighborhood support service from being used for purposes that are customarily a business and a childcare is customarily a business, and the main purpose Family Services is proposing this project is for childcare, the project should be invalid. Let me say today that even if childcare were possible in this neighborhood, the plan laid out by Family Services falls short of the regulations for the childcare center according to the municipal code and design standards. Good, yes, okay. Chapter 3 dot 90, Section 3 reads, "When playgrounds are provided adjacent to residential use, they shall be entirely fenced in with a minimum of a six-foot opaque fence or wall for the children's safety and to minimize the visual and noise impacts of the facility. A non-opaque fence, such as chain-link fence, may be used if evergreen plants covering 100% of the area from zero to six feet in height are planted between the fence and the property line. Plant material must be at least six feet high at planting. Fencing adjacent to a public park does not need to be opaque. There is a planned play lawn in the designs for the safety of the kids in this area would need to be, excuse me, for the safety of the kids. This area would need to be fenced, and that fence would need to run to the building. The house on the corner is also directly adjacent to the planned play lawn, requiring the lawn to be fenced. Some of these conditions can be modified as stated in Section 27 dot 63 dot 070, Paragraph G. However, only the city council can do so, and as far as I am aware, this request has not been made to the city council. It is also concerning that the LMC Building Codes, Chapter 20 dot 06 dot 290, states that tornado shelters must be provided for Group E occupants, a daycare service of more than 12 children over two and a half years of age. Group E, Group E is defined by Chapter 20 point oh 6 point 240. There is no such shelter in any of these plans, and the building does not appear to be able to withstand 200 mile an hour winds. Further, I'm also concerned about the children's safety in this facility for other reasons. With all the horror stories in the news ranging from targeted mass shootings, kidnappings, child exploitation, I'm worried about the vulnerability of the children's in this facility. Access to this facility can't be restricted because it is a part of the residential open space of the community unit plan. It is counted as such in order to meet residential lot size requirements. Chapter 3.35, Section 1.4 says, 'Adequate and appropriate' adequate and appropriate recreational facilities be provided in the common open areas to serve the needs of the development and anticipated occupants to fill the needs of occupants, whether they are young, elderly, handicapped, whatever. Such facilities shall be readily accessible from the dwelling units in the community unit plan. These shall occupy with the design standards for recreational facilities as established by resolution city council."
Sir, we have reached our time limit. If you could please wrap up here quickly, I'd appreciate it.
Family services used to taking care of children in schools where the facilities are already built to keep kids safe. In this facility, family services is planning on taking risks with the children. They will be taken care of, risks that are entirely unnecessary if they were to build the community center and a play area for it specifically on the empty lots available around Sang Park. The neighborhood support services were supposed to be located with paragraph B. Thanks.
Very good, thank you very much. Questions for the testifier?
I just had a question.
Yes, Councilman Bowers.
I guess not a question. Ms. Layman, can you just, the code that you have under the first level there? I wasn't able to see the, can I just write down the section number that's in real quick?
Yes, I think.
You can zoom it up too.
Yeah, yeah, I can't see it either.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman?
Thanks.
No, very good. All right, thank you. Anyone else here who would like to testify today?
I'll go ahead and go. So we are here today to.
Your name, please.
Could you please start with your name and address?
Jessica Layman, address five zero two seven Alesworth. We are here today to appeal the decision made by the planning committee on the, at the June fourteenth meeting regarding fifty-one Commons and S P two three E zero two one. We believe the planning committee failed in their duty to adequately review the project. When they were presented with code violations, the committee could not be bothered to go to the effort to look up the violations in the Lincoln Municipal Code. They instead took the word of the incredibly biased planning department representative of whose actions in obscuring the nature of this project have been previously detailed and will further be detailed. To begin with, let me say the Lincoln Municipal Code is written in such a way as to purposefully have multiple interpretations. I would ask that these, that in interpreting these, these codes, you follow section twenty-seven point six three point zero one zero under procedures for special uses where it states the interests of the city surrounding and surrounding interests are protected and the spirit of these regulations is preserved. Section, nope, lost my place. In section twenty-seven sixty-five point thirty, paragraph C, it states that the buildings and land in the proposed community unit plan shall be used only for various types of dwellings, accessory uses and other uses permitting in the zone permitted in the zoning district in which the land is located. Fifty-one Commons is located in R two zoning, which is explicitly for single and double family dwellings. The triplexes proposed would violate the basic spirit of R two zoning wherein this district is intended to provide a generally stable residential use in areas of the city that are largely developed. It is district, this district permits single and two family dwellings and supportive community services, which noticeably does not include townhouses or triplexes. Townhouses and multi-family dwellings are only permitted in R two districts by special permit and the only reason they need a special permit is because they chose to ignore the lots up by Sang Park. We believe that this was yet another case of intentional misleading either by family services or the planning department to justify further overcrowding of the land under this proposal. The triplexes were used in order to obtain the minimal spacing required between units. Even then, this was only possible by reducing the setback from Alesworth from twenty-five to fifteen feet. They are also using a similar setback along fifty-first street in order to fit these units into this block, grandfathering it in based on the house at the corner of Holdridge and fifty-first. I believe that this waiver should not be granted and both streets should have the full 25-foot setback due to the excess runoff this would cause. My neighbors will detail this further. From my point right now, the fills under these units lead them, lead these townhouses to violate the design standards which I brought up to the planning committee. However, my concerns were dismissed because of the floodplain. Noticeably, these units are also not handicap accessible. Now, in the design standards, chapter three point five, point seven five, section four, point one, paragraph five states, "The elevation of the first floor or level of new dwellings shall generally match the pattern of half or more of the houses on the same facing block fronts." The same section further states, "These design standards do not supersede floodplain or accessibility standards, but neither, but neither are these standards waived for those other public purposes. Good design and planning can meet multiple objectives. By raising the houses up, they violated the design standards. Family services was once again so uncreative about obstacles, they failed to notice this is a 1970s neighborhood, littered with split level entry buildings. By raising these buildings with a crawl space rather than a fill to get them over the B F E, making them appear to be split level entries, they could have made the fit, them fit. The general design of the neighborhood opened a greater possibility for accessibility and reduced the amount of runoff caused by these units into the rest of the neighborhood." So I guess by the design standards definition, this means the project was poorly designed and planned. Given the lots surrounding Sang Park, there is no need to grant a special permit to fifty-one Commons in order to cram this project into this block.
Okay, very good. Any questions for our testifier? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Councilman, yes, please.
Do you know what the height is of the existing houses that are there?
I know that I bought a 22-foot ladder in order to get up on my roof if I ever had to. They're all significantly under twenty, under 35 feet though.
So that would be like a split level house would be the taller one?
Mine's a split level, I guess, maybe 25, 27 feet tall.
Okay.
Any other questions, Councilman?
Robert Schlaumann, fifteen forty-five North fifty-first.
Sir, sir, hold on, I apologize.
Hold on.
No, we'll get to that in a second. I apologize, no, one speaker at a time. Councilman Doon, are you finished with your questions of this testifier? Okay.
He probably has a better answer.
And I have one.
I'm sorry?
Speaking to the elevation.
I understand, but one speaker at a time.
You get it.
No, I appreciate it. Councilwoman Washington, yes?
I have a question for Ms. Lambert. Last week you came forward and you said that the planning department or the developer or whoever was in violation of the floodplain. Would you please explain what you think the violation is?
I don't remember.
I may not have gotten it correct.
Violation of the floodplain? It may have been violated building codes because of the floodplain?
I wrote down floodplain violations. And I wanted you to explain where you think the floodplain violations happened or proposed. I should have asked last week, but I thought about it after the hearing was done. All right.
Perhaps if I could go grab what I had written from last week, I might have it in there.
You know what, we're not going to vote until next week. How about if we just have a conversation?
Other questions, Councilwoman?
Not right now.
Very good. Any other questions of the testifier? Okay, very good. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify? Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Philip Zelig. I live at fifteen thirty-six David Drive. I guess I have two questions. The first one is about six K and if this passes, the way it indicates here, neighborhood service support to remove the condition set forth. Would this be open for anyone without the parameters on it?
Of a neighborhood support center?
Yeah, or to put something like this in without it having, having the parks, school, place of religious. That will be taken out so anybody can do something like this without those parameters in.
Without that one parameter in, the other parameters A, C, D, E, F, G still apply.
But I'll ask that specifically of our planning director to make sure that we get that clarification on the record, sir.
I mean, that could open it up for a lot of other people doing this and not around one of these, right? Okay. The second is on six L and I guess my problem with it is parking and traffic through. I don't understand why, why don't we have the parking along Holdridge? Why do we have it in the middle? And we only have, we have part of that parking lot is for the 10, 10 units, which is about 20 of those parking spaces. Why not move the whole building down, take out the community garden and have parking all the way across and in and out? That would avoid all the traffic down David Drive, down those street, off streets. You could have park, part of that parking up there for the units and have the rest for the, the community center off of. Is there any reason why those aren't off of Holdridge? Okay. And are, do we have the required parking lot spaces? He said there would be maybe 50 students. There could be 50 cars there for, from parents, right? So is there a required parking there? I don't know if you'll answer any of these questions now.
What we will do is that we will go ahead and direct those questions to staff when they come up.
Today.
Today.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Any questions of our testifier? Okay, I think we're, we're good actually. No one indicated they wanted to ask a question. Were there other testifiers that wanted to come forward today?
Also, as a reminder, we do have two microphones available. So if anyone else would like to come up and testify on this item, please come forward.
If there's another testifier who would like to testify today, if we could go ahead and have them come up and get here prepared at the other microphone, that would be great.
Ron Brown, fifty-fifty Alesworth, Lincoln, Nebraska. I live across the street from where this is supposed to be going in. If you look to my left, that first townhouse is once a waiver. He wants to put it 15 foot from the corner instead of the 25 foot for the setback. Them themselves put a tree in there. The dirt is brimmed up. You're not going to be able to see around that corner when somebody comes out of that alley that they propose and there's going to be wrecks. And there again, they even proved that there's going to be a tree and a vision problem. So this whole thing was not put through the council very well. Is there any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Uh, seeing none, thank you. Sir?
Yes, Robert Schlaumann, fifteen forty-five North fifty-first. I am the owner that will be facing, these units will be facing me.
If we could zoom out here or, or simply move it, there we go. Robert, I'm sorry, could you identify again, point to where you were pointing to earlier? We missed it. Okay.
I'm right about in here across the street.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So these 35-foot tall buildings, which are made to aesthetically match the neighborhood, are not going to look pretty from my bedroom window. But I wanted to address the sanitary sewer issues that have been in the neighborhood for many years. This is my property right here, fifteen forty-five North fifty-first. This manhole in the back corners of the three properties that are back here backs up frequently. My father-in-law purchased the home in 1974. And finally, in 1982, 83, he kept calling the city saying, you're flooding my basement. In 1989, we put a back check system in the home because the sanitary sewer kept backing up into the basement. The city would come jet it and they would take and fill the laundry room with sewage. Till this day, I check that manhole weekly and have found that I have called four different times in the time that I've owned the home in five years, that this manhole backs up and I call sanitary and they come out and they jet it. For them to add, not knowing now what they're going to add to the community center for occupancy, it's, it's not acceptable. And then to add 10 more houses, we have a, what we call a pandemic in sanitary sewer with wipes, flushable wipes. We have city mains backing up all the time. Family services chose to account for the floodplain. We reside in using a fill method raise the new structures above these basic flood elevations. Now currently, trees grow in this block, serve drain water into the ground. The influx of rooftops are definitely imperable, will create an excess runoff. The steep grade of these fills cause even more runoff to the streets and have a tendency to flood as it is. Because of this fill and the runoff, the setbacks should be increased, if any, to so, to comply with. Section twenty-seven point six five point zero three zero, paragraph A, the land surrounding the tracks for the proposed community unit will not be adversely affected. Family services claims that June fourteenth meeting that the water from the new construction will drain into the planned retention pond. Their own map shows arrow plans for the significant portions of the water for these housing units to drain into both fifty-first and Alesworth, both which have no drainage or current flood into residents. According to the plans, the retention pond is going to have the bottom elevation of 1164.5 feet with the drain being 1163. However, the measure for the storm drain on 52nd and they have planned to connect the retention pond into, it's 32 inches from the bottom of the drain to the top of the hole. There is many under six to eight inches of level of the sidewalk. Top of the sidewalk is 1167 feet. That puts the bottom of the storm drain about 116.7. The street drain is several inches uphill of the overflow of the pond. Water doesn't flow uphill. Special permits don't change the laws of physics. Family services, all right.
Okay, very good.
We talked about heights.
Yes, let's address that question that Councilman Doon had.
Most homes in that neighborhood are either split foyer or ranch homes. Mine was a ranch with an addition on top. So it added up about 29 feet tall. What you have for elevations of a split foyer, obviously you can figure the elevation, whatever the floodplain is, plus the little split foyer home that is being built over there right now, works great for split foriors. But to have a 35-foot structure, the sun, I get about 9:30 in the morning. I'm probably looking at about 11:30 with the structure being built.
Councilman Doon, did you have any other questions regarding this particular item?
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for our testifier? Okay, seeing none, thank you for coming forward, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on this item? Anyone else here who would like to testify on this particular item? Okay, before we get. Okay, before we get to additional testimony or questions of staff and the applicant team, we're going to take a quick 10-minute break. We will reconvene here at 4:55. Thank you. Let's see. 6K, 6L. Counsel, do we want to start with city questions? Do we want to start with developer questions? Let's, let's start with, let's start with city. Let's go ahead and start with city. Director Carey, do you want to come on down? I have a couple of questions for you. We'll start there. A couple of the questions that we received from testifiers today, I think are wholly within your realm. Could you speak to, so we have a text amendment in front of us, text amendment 23008, which removes some of the conditions regarding neighborhood support services. Could you speak to a testifier who asked whether or not there were other conditions being removed other than the items listed, and how this might impact other uses in the neighborhood besides a neighborhood support service?
Sure, just to, for the record, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So the, to be clear on the text amendment piece of this, so what is proposed for your consideration, and that was recommended for approval from the Planning Commission, is item B under 2763610, neighborhood support services, which is the, the current requirement that this type of use be located, be an existing structure adjacent, contiguous, or separated by an alley or street to a park, school, place of religious assembly, or neighborhood center. Just to be specific, that that's the change that's being proposed in the text. The basic reasoning behind that and in talking with the applicant about this is that, that that restriction does limit the amount of opportunity for these types of support services to be located throughout the community. The other piece of that, your question was about limiting other uses?
I, I wondered if, if the testifier wondered if this particular text amendment would have any other impact on any other uses across the board, or is this specific to neighborhood services?
Thank you, yes. So this is specific to neighborhood support services, so we're talking about just that use. And by the way, the other conditions of approval would still be in place that are currently in the code, so it really would, they still have to provide, it still has to be a nonprofit, for example, that we're talking about. So that, that is a big differentiation to what other, all other types of activities that could happen under neighborhood support services, so the intent is to provide for more flexibility for that, the nonprofit world to do, provide this type of service to neighborhoods.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then another testifier question that we had that I think pertains to city staff, I see Bob sitting in the audience behind you, so I don't know if Bob wants to come up and talk about this, but could we talk about parking and traffic flow a bit? Could we address specifically why we don't have access on Holdridge for this site, why we're not accessing the site via Holdridge? And then could we also address whether or not this particular site meets the required parking standard?
Okay, Bob Summerring, Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th. Holdridge is the arterial, so we would want to restrict the number of access points along Holdridge as much as we could allow smooth flow of traffic there, and that would be the reason why we want the access points different than Holdridge. And then as far as the parking, there are, in the CUP, there are requirements for parking for this facility, and they do meet those. I don't have the tables with me, but they do meet those tables.
So just to be clear, the ideology being, we already have access at 50th Street. We already have access on 51st Street, and, or, you know, I might be 51st and 52nd, I apologize, 51st and 52nd Street. And because of that, we don't want to add another drive aisle in between those two. Is that the ideology of the access management plan?
Policy would not permit that.
Sure.
I would add one more piece of information on the parking, that the, the plan that's proposed is effectively showing a shared parking lot between the residences and the, the neighborhood support service activity, so that, as Bob said, that this community unit plan provides for the parking.
And to take it a step further as well, we're also talking about a plan that takes access for the townhomes off of a private alley in the back, so we're not adding more, there's not additional curb cuts on 51st Street because of the access in the rear of the, the space, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, very good. Uh, Councilwoman, yes, please.
Can I just tag on to that one? Oh, pardon me, I'll tag on to that one. When you calculated the number of parking spaces necessary for the CUP, how many spaces did you calculate for the townhomes as opposed to the center?
Do you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I do know that the adequate parking has been accounted for.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, do we want to talk about the sightline as well?
Yes, one more transportation thing. So one of the, the last folks to come forward had a question and some concerns about the that corner there with the setback requirement being, they're asking for a waiver from 25 to 15. It's brimmed and it shows landscaping of a tree. Could you talk about the sightlines?
We do inspect that regularly with folks in my section. And one of the things we maintain are the site triangles, and if there is vegetation or anything that is cutting into that site triangle, we do require removal, trimming, or whatever it is to keep that site triangle safe for traffic moving.
Does the berm itself create a problem with the site triangle?
Depends on the height of the berm, so the line of sight is 30 inches from the ground, and it has a target that's six inches off the ground, so that's the way a site triangle is measured.
Councilman Duden?
Yeah, what's the slope there then on that last
I might have to ask the developer that question.
Yeah, we need the plans to see that detail.
We'll save that for the developer. Since I have Bob up here, if you guys don't mind, Bob, could you talk about, generally speaking, the sanitary sewer in this area, and whether or not the existing sanitary sewer is capable of handling the proposed development?
Yes, this is, there's an eight-inch main that serves this area, and that's the main that they will be tapping into. The capacity that main is adequate to carry these, and any of the problems that they might be having for backup could be a maintenance issue, it could be something that's just temporary that can be addressed. I don't know what the details are of any of these clearances that they had to work on before ours, so I can't really address those specifically, what they were, what caused them, but as far as the size of that main goes, it's adequate to carry the additional homes that are here.
Including the proposed community center?
Facility, yes.
Okay, Councilwoman, did you have a?
I do, I have a specific, so let's dig in just a little deeper on that eight-inch sewer main. The neighbor who talked about having to have, have, have four calls in five years or something to do backup and cleanouts. When that section, when that block feeds into it, where is that in relationship to the new development that's being proposed? Do they feed in at the same place?
I, we need to see the plan in order to comment on that, then the developer may have that.
Any other questions for city staff at this point in time? I would remind us that we also have Tim Zock here with, with geez, Tim. Watershed Management, the superintendent of Watershed Management at our disposal here as well. Any additional question? Councilwoman, yes, then we'll go to Councilman Duden.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, and Tim, I'll, I'll make sure that I have a question for you as well. But first, let's, David Carey, Mr. Carey, could you talk a little bit about the statement that the triplex configuration violates city code? So if you could explain
Yeah, sure.
R2, R2 CUP?
Yes.
What's allowed?
I appreciate the question. So I think it, it's important to differentiate straight R2 zoning with the fact that we're dealing with a proposal for a community unit plan, which is a tool, a zoning tool that allows for more flexibility when it's dealing with residential units and uses. So in the CUP language and the code, it does specifically go on to state that it does allow for multifamily and other special permitted uses, which would be the neighborhood support services as well. It has to go through the process like we're going through right now and certainly get approval, but it does allow for that level of flexibility. So I would also take the opportunity to note that the 10 units that are, that are proposed is actually lower than what would it be allowed by right on this property right now, which would be 12 or 14 if they reconfigured it a little bit with the final plan, when that would not go through any public review process whatsoever. So I would just note, I would put that into the record as well.
By right, without going through a CUP or a public process, they could add 14 units
Correct.
to the same amount of space that they've added 10.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman, yes?
How is that possible if you're asking for a 15-foot? A 15-foot setback added?
Yeah, so the, the, that, that type of request wouldn't be necessary under that land area that we're dealing with if they were going with single-family units, that, that this wouldn't be necessary. So the, the applicant can speak to the, the need for the 15-foot versus the 25-foot.
I mean, Martha, don't, don't the fronts of the houses line up within the block in this?
So typically, what I guess, what I'm saying is that the 12 or 14, depending on if there was some type of lot adjustment, lot line adjustments, they would be, be able to meet all those existing requirements.
But can they can?
Well, just, it's under the, the way that the, the projects have been put together with multiple different uses on the site, which are a combination of the residential units and the neighborhood support service activities. So that does change the dynamic of the lot by doing that.
Still does not address, would you look at the house on the corner of the southwest corner of 52nd and Ellsworth? Under shade? Basement, house under construction, and in front of that, quite a ways back from the, the street, townhouses are going to be a lot much smaller?
Yeah, under the proposal, they're, they're designing the site, and you can speak to the applicant specifically about the, how they want to do it, but, just for clarification, the 12 or 14 is in addition to the existing units that are on that, that block area too, so.
Other questions at this point in time for staff? Uh, councilwoman, yes?
Yes. So, I would like to, this is a question maybe David and Tim Zock could, could address. It sounds like we have a situation where we've got a known floodplain, and we have neighborhood design standards, and tell me how they blend together or how they, I don't know, conflict, or how do you, how do you balance?
I'll take the first stab at that.
Yeah. And then I'm going to have a question directly about Dead Man's Run.
So, thank you for that question as well. So, there is, there is language in the neighborhood design standards that specifically state that we have these neighborhood design standards that are to be abided by mostly, and then the language clearly says that except that floodplain regulations are to be abided by, kind of like in a, in a first step, that that needs to be done to make sure that that happens and that safety factor is there. And then we apply the neighborhood design standards as best as possible effectively is how we, how we treat them.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add to that, yeah.
So, Dead Man's Run, the project is being, Dead Man's Run is being worked on, correct?
Yes.
And so, when you're done with the Dead Man's Run project, how is the floodplain going to change? Is it going to change?
Yes. First off, Tim Zock with LTU, 555 South 10th Street. So, the project is going from Cornhusker Highway all the way up to 48th Street. That's where the channel improvement project will stop. Uh, the 48th Street Bridge will be replaced, and then just the widened channel will be graded to connect into the existing channel and just upstream of 48th, so just to the east in Sang Park. There's a pedestrian bridge there in Sang Park, and we'll stop just before that pedestrian bridge. And so, the benefits of that project will not, will not extend any further east than 48th Street, mainly because the channel is not wide enough once you get farther east, as well as there's a number of roads that are restrictions. So, like 52nd Street, right in this neighborhood, is a really small bridge or culvert crossing that's also a restriction that's causing flooding in the area. So, the benefits of that project won't extend that far out.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Duden, yes, sir?
Won't the expanded culvert underneath 48th Street though leave some of that flooding?
It'll provide a little bit right in that area, but it's not that culvert that's causing the water to back up, it's the channel. So, the channel's too small, and the floodwaters spill out of the channel in the neighborhood there.
Other questions? Director Kerev, one question for you. We had some testifiers reference other municipal code and speak to it very directly. I think one of the, the codes may have been actually referencing childcare centers, but could you speak generally about some of the code references that we heard and whether or not you think that they apply to this particular project here?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so I, you know, I appreciate the, the testimony and the, the concern. A lot of that testimony was referencing specifically childcare uses and the, the requirements that come along with childcare. So, this is a good opportunity to be clear that this use is not childcare. This is a neighborhood support service use that includes after-school and summer camp activities. So, what, what, part of what looks like childcare at this site is actually accessory to the overall activity that's happening there, which means it's, it, it's a, it's a less than, you know, 50% of the activity. So, this proposal does not actually meet the definition of childcare, so it cannot request that for this site and for the activities that they're talking about. So, it is neighborhood support service, and so therefore, that post parts of the code that were being referenced would not apply to this site.
Is it, is it fair to say, for example, they might prepare food on-site, but that doesn't mean that they need to necessarily meet all of these zoning requirements for use of a rest, as a restaurant, for example?
I, I think that's accurate. I'm not going to go as far as to say they understand all of those sections of that code for food preparation, but I think that's a decent comparison.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Other questions? Yes, councilwoman?
Um, these are more of the questions I think that we heard in the earlier testimony. So, if it's not a childcare, can, do they need a tornado shelter? And I'm so sorry, building and safety isn't here. And then it seems that there was an assertion made that a recreation facility was for the tenants or the residents only. Um, yeah, and that playgrounds all required fencing and screening.
I, so, we, we can get specific answers like that. That's a building and safety specific question, and we can get that before your action next week to you.
That would be helpful.
But again, my, my understanding is that those types of specific requirements would be required for a childcare facility, but this is not being identified as such.
So, all of those are within childcare? And then unless my, my fellow counselor has a question about, about childcare, and then I'll have one more question afterwards. Go ahead.
Councilman Duden?
I believe that this specifically came up and said that when kids are out of school for the 20 days that they're out, that the parents can be able to drop them off there and pick them up.
So, it's a good question. So, the, the, the specific activity of those particular days throughout 365 days of the year, it presents itself as having, part of what's happening at the, at the neighborhood support service center would have some of those activities, but the way that we look at how we identify zoning and for the use itself, it needs to be a predominant activity, and that's not what's happening in this proposal. So, it's, it's not, we, they, they don't qualify to be identified as a childcare facility because they're not doing it full-time. So, they, that's not an option for them.
Summers and 20 days during the school year.
It, it, it wouldn't, well, it counts, but it's, it doesn't get them to that threshold.
Other questions, councilman? Nope? Okay. Any other questions, councilwoman?
Yes. So, all right, the last question about water and movement and the catch basin. So, there were questions about the sloping of the lawns, the catch basin and its capacity and like where water was going to come from. Then they showed a picture that showed that water was moving in multiple directions. I could see arrows moving toward the catch basin. But if you could talk to that, Mr. Zock, that would be great.
Yeah.
Or if you want to bring the other Tim up to talk about that too?
Yeah, I can let the applicant talk about it a little bit more, but.
Two Tims.
Two Tims.
This, the lot today, part of that block does drain to 51st Street, and part of it does drain to 52nd, and some of it may drain north to Aylesworth. And so, what we're ensuring is that their design does not increase it in any of those directions. So, they may be reducing some of the area and some of the water that is running off to 51st Street today, while the front yards still may run off 51st Street. They're taking most of it and sending it to 52nd Street. And since they're sending more area to 51st Street, that's where they're providing detention so that they're not increasing the amount of runoff to 52nd, yeah, to 52nd Street. But I think Tim can provide a map and explain that a little bit better than I can, so.
Thank you.
To piggyback off of Councilwoman Washington's question, Superintendent Zock, could you explain a little bit about the process in terms of the applicant submitting a plan when it comes to runoff, and then what, what watershed management does with that plan to ensure whether or not there's a additional impact to the neighborhood?
Yeah. So, there's kind of multiple, kind of a few different categories that we look at. So, we look at the water quantity that's leaving the site, so ensure that the amount of water when it rains is not being increased from what was there before the project came to be. So, that's detention. So, typically, they have to build detention ponds. And for an infill project like this, we, you know, it's, there's something built today, there was homes there, so they take that as their existing condition, and then they look at their proposed. And so, they have to look at kind of all directions where it leaves the site and make sure that's not being increased. So, they can either reduce the area that's going off that direction, and that reduces the amount of runoff, or they can provide a detention pond to hold the water and then slowly release it. We also look at water quality, and so this project's providing water quality in that same detention pond. So, it's holding it for a little bit longer and allowing those pollutants and solids to settle out in the pond, and so that treated water leaves that pond and travels downstream. And then we also look at the floodplain in this property. There's floodplain regulations, and there's a recently adopted two-foot freeboard, and that this project's required to meet so that the floor, the lowest floor of all the structures that are built is elevated two foot above the 100-year floodplain elevation. And so, those are kind of the three main ones that we look at. Since they're not building any new, like, public roads, they don't have to deal with, you know, new storm pipes, except for what they need for their detention, so.
Thank you.
You're up.
Mr. Zock, I appreciate that explanation. Any other questions at this point in time? Okay. Very good. Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Applicant, we are ready for you.
It's been a long time. Tim Gergen, 1010 Lincoln Mall. As always, city staff did a great job of answering a lot of questions that were asked of you. I will talk a little bit about, I think there were some slope and site distance issues. We'll, we'll get into that first. So, due to our floodplain regulations and our two-foot of freeboard that we're following with the new floodplain ordinances that watershed management has enacted, we have 16 and a half feet from curb to right-of-way. So, that is a lot of your site distance that you're going to see right-of-way. So, we have 16 and a half feet from the curb to the right-of-way, which will have the street trees and your sidewalks, your water mains, your utilities. And then at that property line, we start our three-to-one slopes up to the units. And you can see here, like Bob Simmering was talking about, we have the 30-foot or 30-inch height restriction. So, by the time you get up to 30 inches on the lot, you're well within already a couple feet of the property. So, you're at 25 feet off of the curb line for your site distance. So, we've looked at that site distance already, and we do meet the site distance requirements on that. We do have three-to-one slopes coming up. We are providing for a five-foot patio around the front parts of that, each unit here, and then with steps coming down through there. It's an unfortunate part, but it's development in an infill property with new floodplain regulations where these existing homes don't have to abide by. This is what we're left with, and this is what we have to do as part of these new regulations, and that's what we're abiding by. As far as some other questions that were about waivers or, or life safety codes, a lot of those things are enforced with building and safety, and those will be part of our building permit process. We're not planning to waive or avoid any life safety code issues, but part of our building permit, we're going to use and adhere to all of those codes by building and safety. Only waivers we have in front of you are ones that are presented to you and that you'll be voted on next week. I'm going to have, Dennis is going to come up, talk a little bit about the childcare through there, but our parking lot, let's talk about, a little bit on our parking lot. As Bob Simmering was mentioning, we have, Holdridge Street is an arterial street, we have access management policies. We're going to abide by them as well. The parking lot is a, intended to be a shared parking lot. We did not want to create a parking lot for the neighborhood support center, a neighborhood, a parking lot for the residential uses. They're non-concurrent uses, what we call those, where someone is going to be using the parking lot during the day for the neighborhood support services, and then the parking lot will be used in the evening for the residents. It's called a non-concurrent uses, and this is the best way to handle parking lot. We have less imperviousness, we have less pavement areas. Instead of creating two parking lots, we have one parking lot. It's, it's the better design that we're using nowadays, and that's why we have a centrally located parking lot in the middle of the lot. Tim Zock, I think answered a lot of your questions for stormwater, but I'll try to answer those again. So, I think one of the neighbors talked about measuring an inlet. Yes, the inlets are shallow in this area, but what we're tying into is not a stormwater inlet, we're tying into the 48-inch trunk storm shore. It's a much deeper pipe, it's a much bigger pipe, and so this is a new manhole that we are going to be building and tying into that new storm shore pipe. It's much deeper, allows us to drain and have capacity for that stormwater detention. I'd be happy to answer any of your additional questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Gergen at this point? Any other questions? All right. Very good. Mr. Hoffman, would you like to come up and talk about childcare?
Sure. So, again, Dennis Hoffman, Family Service, 501 South 7th. I just want to make the distinction between early childcare versus school age. So, we're not proposing a program that's a licensed early childcare center. That's something very different. They have their own set of regulations, including some of the items that were brought forth by the, the neighborhood concern. So, there is that distinction. The other thing that I'd like to touch on a little bit is the property itself. This is a property that the residents in the neighborhood, and I believe the city council, I've been familiar with for many years, it receives a lot of neighborhood complaints because of the condition it's in currently. I know it's been on the neglected property list for the city for a long time. There's an abandoned house on the property now that is part of the purchase agreement we'll tear down in order to move forward with the construction. So, I feel like we've presented a proposal that not only enhances the neighborhood, but also solves a longstanding issue and concern for the city. The use will be fairly small in scale compared to what other uses could be for a two-acre lot on a busy street like Holdridge. So, Family Service, I feel, is taking what I consider a bold move to take a chance on a tough property to work on, not only the floodplain, but also the current conditions of the property, to make it a nice neighborhood for 10 families, and then also add an amenity of the community center that others in the neighborhood can also benefit from as well. So, thank you for your time and your consideration, and I also want to thank the neighbors for coming, too. I know that they are not in agreement with the property, but they've also spent a lot of time on this and done a lot of due diligence on their part. I respect the process, and I'm glad that they were able to come forth and share their concerns, and we'll take those concerns and try to work with them in the future moving forward to make it a good project for everybody.
Additional questions for Mr. Hoffman? Any additional questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
That closes the hearing on items, on these two items. Madam Clerk, would you please move us forward to ordinances for reading?
I'll be calling Section 7, ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions. Item 7A is approving a lease agreement between the City of Lincoln and Arbor E&amp;T LLC, doing business as Equus Workforce Solutions for the lease of space by Equus Workforce Solutions at 1330 N Street, Suite A and B, from January 27, 2023, through December 31, 2029, introduced by Carlson.
So, moved?
Second.
Second. Washington, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B is Change of Zone 08011A, application of Cedars Home for Children Foundation, Inc., to amend the Cedars planned unit development to expand the facility to include an approximate 9,000-square-foot indoor recreation facility and a shelter expansion for an additional six apartment units on the property generally located at 6601 Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Carlson.
So, moved?
Second.
Second. Duden, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7C is Change of Zone 08041F, application of Rigor Engineering Group to amend the Pine Woods Group to amend the Pine Woods planned unit development to change from AGR Agriculture Residential District to R3 Residential PUD over the 9.78 acres of land, all to add an approximate 22,000 square foot, excuse me, 22,000 square feet of floor area for a club on property generally located at 6401 Pine Lake Road, introduced by Carlson.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Washington, comments?
Yes.
Yes, Counselwoman.
I just, I wanted to note that last week, the applicant did not come forward for the public hearing, which I think is unusual. And I really wanted to have a conversation with the applicant because he came forward a couple of weeks ago at an open public session to make a lot of statements and complain about the floodplain regulations and claiming that there was no solution. And I think his application, as we saw it, shows that city staff came up with some very usable solutions. And I wanted to at least to have a conversation with the applicant to ask if he was satisfied with that or if he had any other concerns. His not showing, I think, shows that he has no concerns. I just thought we were going to get an opportunity to have that conversation. With all of that said, I am going to vote in favor of this application, this change of zone, because I think that there were some really thoughtful considerations provided and some useful solutions here, so.
Very good. Other comments? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7D is change of zone 23050, application to Rega Engineering, to change from AGR Agriculture District to AGR Agriculture Residential District on property generally located at 8450 Buckboard Drive, introduced by Carlson.
So moved? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Weber, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7E is amending the pay schedule for employee group with classification is assigned to the pay range, which is prefect by C, by changing the range for Class 5372 Control Instrumentation Technician from C30 to C35, introduced by Carlson.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Washington, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7F is amending the pay schedule for employee group with classification is assigned to the pay range, which is prefect by C, by changing the range for Class 5304, Telemeter Control Technician from C30 to C35, introduced by Carlson.
So moved?
Second.
Second. Washington, comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Excuse me. Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. Section 8 is resolutions, first readings, for Items 8A through 8F. Section 9 is our pending list, our Items 9A through 9D.
All right. Tonight is a period for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, not on a matter on this agenda, nor plan to appear on a future agenda, may do so at this time. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Anyone here who would like to address the council? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move adjournment?
Second.
Second. Carlson, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
We are adjourned.